Okay, yes, we're ready. Okay. Uh, at this meeting, trustee Williams is going to act also as the clerk. So please take your time speaking and she may ask me to repeat some things. I call the meeting to order. This is a special committee meeting. Uh, April 5th, 7:00 PM. Medical Trustee. This is called the road. Okay. First item is discuss Tornero Grocery Store issues.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, tonight I'll discuss one issue that we have with the community store which has been corrected.
Well, I didn't hear you. Yeah, no, it was on, but it's maybe too fast. Go ahead.
Tonight I will be discussing only one issue pertaining to Tornero Grocery Store and that issue being labels. Labeling of store items or lack thereof. The main issue that tonight we're talking about is specifically when a customer comes into the store that and they go to a particular shelf looking for a particular item, there's no cost or, you know, the items, many of the items are not labeled in terms of the cost of item. Causing the customer to bring the item to the register and only to know then if they can or cannot afford it in some cases. And that is, that is an issue that's annoying to say this. But that issue has been corrected today. I actually went to store and I saw managers and three other employees labeling all of the, just working from one aisle to the next, labeling all items. And one of the managers may mention that he is also going to make sure that the vendors who come in and they stock and label or price their own items to do the same as well. Okay, so that item is off. We no longer have that issue anymore. And that concludes, that concludes my report.
Any questions? Any questions? All right.
Thank you so much, trustee Coleman. Uh, contrary to what we used to think or say, we do actually have a grocery store in this village. So it's not a very large one, but we do have a grocery store and you can actually go there. You can shop and buy groceries. The problem was, and me and trustee Coleman discussed, that there was no labeling. And I did go into the store and I spoke with management and I did let them know that we only gonna give them about a week to get this labeled or else we're gonna have to discuss it with our mayor and with our board because I think it's unfair to the residents that we cannot properly go to the grocery store that we do have and shop properly the way that we should. Uh, there was a situation where one of the residents went into the store, uh, had $200 on their link card and when they came out from buying three items, they only had $11 left. So these are the type of predatory things that we have to make sure we don't allow in our community. So thank you, trustee Coleman. I appreciate that.
I do have a question.
Go ahead. I would like also to add that, um, I learned also that the owner doesn't really work in the stores. It's not like he owns several stores and he relies on management to manage. Once he found out that this type of practice was going, was going on, that's how the results of today came about, came about. You know, they immediately corrected that issue. So as we go, as we go back and forth to the stores, this one in particular, we'll be looking for other issues that residents may have. But at the same time, uh, it would, what we really want to do is encourage the residents to come to the meetings and to, to express, you know, their concerns about their grocery stores and their businesses and their, and their.
We'll talk to trustee Williams about putting something in soft top that will encourage our community, our residents to give us their concerns about what is going on in our community. Thank you, trustee Coleman.
Okay, the question that I have, because you may mention that you talked to the owner. Did you give him an ultimatum? As you stated that it was not done by such and such a time that you would do X, Y, and Z. That was, you, Mr. Coleman, you said that.
No.
You didn't say that if he doesn't comply within a certain amount of time that you would? I'm asking.
No, that was a statement from myself.
Okay.
So when I went to speak with the store, because I've been, I've been going to the store for over a year and I know in the three months that I have been trusted here, uh, I've addressed it here at the committee several times with the mayor and all the trustees. So the last time I went into the store to shop, those corrections had not been made yet. So I did speak to them and let them know, if you guys do not make these corrections, I will have to speak to the mayor to bring him into the store so he can see what I see. So obviously trustee Coleman went in and found out that, I guess they didn't want to see the mayor. So they're doing what they need to do.
Did you mention this at all to Antonio?
I've mentioned it to everyone that, uh, to the board, to yourself and to the residents and at their, what times Antonio was also in the meetings or in the audience.
You did tell Antonio that?
Yes, he's privy to the information just as well as everyone that's in, in the audience.
All right.
Mm-hmm. Now hopefully we can now start shopping in our grocery store.
All right, the next item, unless there's any more questions. Uh, review summer festival vendor contracts and payments. Again, that's trustee Barry.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees, residents, to the attorney. First, I want to say, uh, that it's been awesome being a trustee for the last three months appointed. I want to say thank you to the mayor. Uh, one thing I wanted to say about the mayor is that the moment I, he appointed me, he always, as well as his lovely wife, has always encouraged me to speak up, to ask questions and to be who I am. And so they have encouraged me from day one. And so I have, I want to thank them for that and that has made me to be the person that I am as a trustee and hopefully I can, you know, help us move forward. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the first lady and I thank you to all the trustees who have given me so much help along the way and also the attorneys. Thank you all so much. We want to stop this moment and we want to say we just had a South Village election and...
We, 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 we...
We can't do it?
No.
Okay, okay.
We're...
Okay.
This is a special meeting. You only stick to items.
Oh, only on the item. Okay. See, I'm still learning. Thank you guys so much. Okay, so we want to talk about the business proposal. Uh, the mayor did ask me to write up the proposal for the summer festival series. That's what we're calling it. It should be in your packet. Everyone should have these right here in your packet. So last year, as we all know, we did, uh, create a budget. We passed it, we approved it and the festival was only postponed for this year, 2023, June. And so I have been working for the last, diligently for the last two months to try to get all of these vendors, get all of the numbers and all of that within the budget. So as you see, as of today, I just want to make everyone aware. I did pass out a few more items that I just received today because I had some vendors to call me and actually lower their prices quite a bit. So, uh, there are some things that I will be getting to you guys as they are sent, are sent to me. But if you look at your proposal and we want to focus on the entertainment list. We kept it very simple because we just want our residents to be able to come, enjoy themselves and us get to know each other and us get to, you know, partake with one another. So as you see, we have our stage and all these things have been approved. The stages are on reserve and they're just waiting for us to make payments. But we have Flash Productions who is dealing with our stage lighting and our audio um, for the month of June.
Trustee, I got a question for you.
Yes.
What's one of these proposals looking at?
Okay, I'm sorry. You're looking at the proposal right now, uh, with the flower on it, the first one.
Is there a difference between the two?
There are. This is the proposal for the festival in June and then there's a proposal for the festival in July. Everyone should have two copies. You look near the page. Yes. That's the June. For June 17th. Everyone should, everyone should have a, they're doing a packet. Okay, so we're gonna proceed. Okay, so we have Flash Productions which will be handling our stages. And as everyone can see, that's the cost there. Uh, we have Bullet Entertainment who will be covering our van. Uh, he went from 2,400 and he went down to 1,600. We have a new Experience DJ Services. They will handle all of our musical DJ entertainment. Uh, instead of having individual DJs giving us all these individual contracts and invoices, I just went through a company that can supply all of that to us. And that company, um, is charging $2,500 for June and that will consist of nine DJs. Um, we have our festival banner. Uh, that festival banner, the number here will change. Um, you guys were going to change for me and we'll get that, that just happened today. So we'll get that later. Probably tomorrow it'll be in and I will make sure that every trustee is C.C. on that in your mailbox. Uh, we have the flow and supplies that's at $2,000. Um, our police department. We are going to do a combination of South Village Police and also a security company. Uh, the security company is giving me, uh, six security officers for the cost of $2,000. And then we're going to do a combination of our officers. Our officers alone was $3,500 per day, which was not in the budget. So I had to do a combination of a security company and then we will use a few of our officers as well.
So is this for just the 17th of June?
This is for the 17th of June. Mm-hmm. This proposal is just for the 17th of June. Uh, our fire department, Chief Barrett, for the 17th of June, he will be, he's giving us a really great fantastic price of $657 to, to man the, uh, the park. And Bright Star Ambulance is giving us a cost of 1,800. Uh, and we have one standalone DJ company, Mr. David Smith, and he's 500. And that will bring our total for the concert in June at $19,757. And that's well within the budget that we have prepared. And that is all.
Question, question for you. So where is, this doesn't really lie, where is the security company cost? Where is that?
Uh, so the security company cost, these, the contracts that you, uh, the proposal that you have now, these will be updated because I just got a lower cost today. So they will be forwarding me, uh, the, the lower cost and we will update the contracts and I will make sure everyone has a copy in their mailboxes.
And you said David Smith, he's a DJ, right? But now new experience DJs, you said it's nine DJs? Okay, so you're gonna have 10 DJs?
Yes.
Now this is gonna be on one day?
So though, that's the proposal for the June 17th event. And if you regret to get, get the next proposal, that's the proposal with the patio setting? Yes.
Sorry, well, we finished with this one because we have the payment schedule down here. Like how, um, it, is this what they're proposing? That this is to have the deposit, we have to pay this as soon as we sign the contracts? Like what's going on with this part down here?
Okay, so this part down here, let me, let me go to that area. So what you see, uh, the fee summary, that is the totality of what the concert or the festival will cost.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the payment schedule is that we are going to pay everyone 50% of the cost upon receiving the invoice. And so we will be paying out $11,053.50 upfront and then we will pay the remaining balance the day of the event.
So when you say upfront, we're gonna pay this as soon as the board approves?
Uh, we're going to pay it as soon as, yes. So next week, we want to make sure that it's on, it's on schedule for the board meeting so that we can get these invoices approved. Yes.
Has anybody seen the, um, contract?
The contracts, um, yes, you have Bullet Entertainment. It's one of the contracts in your packet.
That sounds, oh, okay.
So we have Bullet Entertainment. So that's one of the contracts in the packet.
This, this, so this is the actual contract?
Yes, that is, that's his contract. His, his, uh, his entertainment agreement. So all of the, well, there again, there are not very many vendors. Uh, so we have very, very few contracts that we have to review. So we have this agreement. Again, we will be receiving an updated contact with a contract with a new price and I should have that tomorrow as well. And so we'll be able to forward that to everyone.
And you, are you signing the contract?
Have I signed contract?
Oh, I said, are you signing the contract? Because there's your name wanted to sign.
No, well, that's my name as the con, as the contact person at the village. Uh, the mayor name is there to sign all contracts.
Have you got these two D lawyers yet to?
Uh, no, I have the attorney here tonight. So I'll make sure to back forward all these contracts to him.
I mean, if that's applicable, I'm just trying to figure out.
Do you want me to make sure that you solve?
No, no, it's, it would go to corporate counsel.
Okay. Yes, Amber said she wouldn't, wasn't available tonight.
No, no, what I'm saying is as far as sending the contracts, getting to her associated.
Okay.
Okay. And this is, okay, this is Bullet and then you have?
So we have a contract for Bullet.
Flash Productions.
And Flash Production, that is the... Production is the contract that has to be revised to reflect the new prices.
Okay, so that's, this is an invoice.
Yes, that is an invoice and those invoices are, as you see, I don't know. As you see, there's, there was a $17,850 invoice for stages. He has reduced that to $8,900 as of today.
Okay, because I don't see that on there. I don't see the stage.
Yes, though, uh...
Yeah, the stage rental is $4,400.
They're also taking care of the stage rental, the audio, the lighting, the sound. So it's a complete package.
But it's an invoice, it's not a contract.
Right, that's an invoice. The contract has to follow because the prices has changed and so he's going to include all of the updated prices in the contract.
Who's, who's providing insurance today, I think?
Uh, he's providing his own insurance. So all of the certificate of insurance all have to be revised to reflect the new prices. This is the, this is the, uh, contract for?
No, when you say floats, what is that?
So floats are, uh, for the, for the parade. They are, they are trailers.
Oh, so you have a parade?
Yes, the parade we do, that we discussed. That me and you discussed.
Okay, but you have to get people, how do you propose to get a parade? I mean, who, who's gonna be in the parade? How do you, what, what kind of parade?
Uh, I talked to, uh, Chief Barrett and also Chief White about the parade and they told me that they had a route mapped out and that they would work with me on the route and work with me on the parade.
Now, is the parade gonna just include South, the South Village? Or is it outside entities that are gonna be involved in the?
No, it'll be South Village children, South Village bands and South Village, uh, fire staff and some of the South trustees and things of that nature. So it's strictly our own village.
Okay, so you said bands, what bands? So a school band?
Yes.
Oh, you have to call them.
Oh, I, I, I'm in touch.
You got to get them involved and that's a lot of, um, liability there.
I, I am in touch with someone at the school. So they're getting me all the information that I need and, uh, to make sure that they can do it. And so they'll let me know their final outcome.
Yeah, because it's, it's a lot of liability, especially if you have kids walking. And then, um, you know, who's gonna be responsible for X, Y, or whatever? So, and are you having it being, I won't say sponsored, but is it gonna just be South Village? Or is you bringing the schools in? Are they gonna be part of the banner or whatever that you're gonna have walking down?
Uh...
Like Blue Trail, Blue Trail's gonna have, you, are you gonna, are you trying to get their band? Blue Trail Band?
Yes, I spoke, I'm trying to get their band. So they are looking into it for me and they want to give me all the details about how many children. And then, um, we're going to work on, not, we're not going to do the route as long as we do for Christmas. So we're looking at just doing the route from South Trail 394 over to the park. So we're gonna keep the parade route very short.
That's usually what the parade route is from there.
From 394 straight to well?
Wait, you use Jeffrey.
Jeffrey, okay.
Not 394. You don't want lineup on 394.
In the plaza?
Yeah, you have one lineup on 1094.
Okay. Yeah. So it's a, there's a lot of moving parts and I've, I've got all this...
And this is gonna be all on June?
This is just the one for June. We're also having a barbecue cookout Father's Day. So we're doing, we're celebrating Juneteenth. So we will have a float honoring Juneteenth. We will also have a float honoring our fathers. Uh, so it's, it's a lot of moving parts and I, I tried to do this in two months. So it's, it's a lot.
And that's gonna be part of the festival?
All of, yes, the band and the parade and all of that. It could be a Father's Day barbecue cookout contest. All of that is a part of the festival. Along with the DJs and the entertainment and all of that.
Do you have a question?
Do, do we need clearance on state of town, South Trail Toys?
Would you, I didn't hear you.
Do you have to get permission from county and state to use the roads correctly? Shut it down?
Yes.
Uh, that is something that I will be, that the chief, uh, Barrett is working with me on. So he knows the ins and outs of that.
Do you have a question?
That was just you before that, right?
That was just you. But the bottom line is that we want to get the best bang for our buck. And so with the budgets that we have, we look for the best vendors with the most competitive prices and we try to get, uh, we want to try to have a festival every month during the summer. We want to keep our residents busy, entertained and engaged. And I think this is the very best, you know, they always say deals are not made in the boardroom. They're usually made on a golf course or at a festival or something like that. So we want to get our residents out so we can engage our residents and so we can engage our communities. So we can help our community move forward. So, uh, this is one of the, this is a great start to do that. So our next proposal?
Also, each event's gonna have ambulance and the fire department, police department all the time too, correct?
Absolutely. Each event will have ambulance, fire and police. So we will have, we will be fully secured and all costs are already accounted for. So the proposal in June, we will have that also, that is also in the budget. Uh, that will be what we consider a house music festival.
You mean July?
July, I'm sorry. We just finished June. Yes, we will have the House Music Festival in the month of July. And that will be the 4th of July weekend, July 1st. And if you go to the fee summary, again, these prices have dropped drastically because as you see, it was at the stage, lighting, audio productions was at $17,850 and that has dropped down to $8,900. Those are the new numbers that I'm waiting on and so this will be updated, which will make a major difference in our, um, in our, in our budget. Again, we're using the same company to Experience DJ Services and we have 12 DJs and they're charging us $3,600 for that.
You said how many DJs?
Uh, 12. So last year I think it was like $300 per DJ. I know in the past we were paying $1,000, $1,500, $2,000, you know, for individual DJs. This company has given me a really great deal. And so I think our DJs are running about $300 per DJ opposed to $1,500 per DJ. Uh, we have our $4,000 firework budget, um, that we have, that we will have. And so we will have a firework show, uh, July 1st following the festival. Again, our Bright Star, uh, at first Bright Star was charging, charging us $3,600. Now we're down to $1,600. So we have to, um, make the numbers reflect in the changes. The fire department was 33 and now they are $1,657. So we have to change that. And all of these numbers just came to me, new numbers just came today. So I'm going to update all of these things and make sure everyone is, is our copy. And for July, because that is a house music fest, we don't have any additional entertainment. That is all music, all dancing. We're just having a really great time. So there we are. So that is a, a more, a more simple festival, but it will bring us together nonetheless. And those are actually the, um, the only items that's on our agenda or that's in our budget for the month of July. And those are the two festivals that we are budgeted for and we came under budget, uh, way under budget actually, uh, for these festivals. And the other ones for August and September, those festivals are outside of this current budget. So we will discuss those things for the new budget contract. All right? Any questions? No questions?
Oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So June and July total together is $53,119.
So that is the old price. And so now we're at about $42,000 with the?
You got it, reduced to $42,000.
Yes.
For the couple. Yes, trustee, $42,000. Okay, and if you look at the, uh, fee summary and then you look at the 50%, um, it's not quite 50%, but that's what they want down. So like if you take the $11,000 for the, um, is this June? $11,053 upfront, the balance would be using the old figures, $8,700. No additional costs, everything's inclusive. Okay, so then... inclusive, okay, so, and it's not quite fifty percent, but it's close, and you're gonna give us all new figures, all documents?
You'll have all those figures in your mailboxes by tomorrow.
To reduce it down to forty-two thousand.
Yes.
And in the budget is how much?
Uh, fifty-one thousand, yes.
Trustee, uh, Wright?
Thank you, a few questions, so going back to, look, look at the invoice from the fire department, so, are the guys gonna be on call, like so they're technically already stationed, or are they, are he's bringing extra guys in to come support the festival? Do you know?
Uh, they're, in the fire department, which, which department are you speaking of?
Fire department.
Yes, the fire department has already given me a schedule and a list of personnel that will be on site, I believe that is six firefighters, one commander, three engineers, so it's a whole staff that will be stationed, and I believe it's two fire trucks.
Right, so I was, I was looking at the, the difference between the two festivals, I mean, why would he need a different staff number for the two different festivals, I mean, shouldn't it just be like the same?
He's accounting for the Fourth of July, we need to be a much larger party.
Okay, gotcha, makes sense.
And that's why he's got the more staff.
So if, if a call comes through, these will, these, these firefighters will probably have to answer the call, or, I mean, it doesn't have any, I'm sure, would be other firefighters go answer the call?
Yes, he, he's made sure that he staffed us, and without any interference to day-to-day operations.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Any other questions? I just wanted to, to just make sure that you, you noted that both times, the police department said, each day, I mean, each event is just about, so just make sure that you double check those with him, but it seems kinda, you know, I don't know, how many, how many hours?
Uh, the concert will be on Saturday, uh, July, uh, June seventeenth, that would be from twelve PM to nine PM, and the concert in July will be from ten AM to nine PM.
Okay, and that's, and I'm just looking at that, just wanna make sure that you, make sure your numbers are right, when you, don't, don't talk to them, because for, for that to be just that, and everyone's gonna be on overtime, because both, the festivals on Saturday, right?
Yes, both festivals.
Okay.
Uh, that's the reason why I'm doing a combination of a security company.
Oh, are they on here too?
Yes, same, same, they're not on here, that security company was just secured today, and so they are giving me their contracts and their invoices, so I'll have these updated. The, the security company, St. Cloud, St. Cloud is two thousand dollars a day, and that will give me six security officers.
Now, you know they have anything that comes and asks me that about the police department, right?
Yes. It's a full-service company, licensed body, and all of that.
So?
And then, so, for, for, and so what I need to talk to Officer or Commander Evans is, Commander Evans originally quoted me nine officers for thirty-five hundred dollars a day, and so, since that was not in my budget, I'm doing a combination, so I will probably, probably only need about three of our own officers, and that will bring to my line total.
Okay, I'm just, okay, I mean, you, you, you put the numbers together, but somehow or another, it doesn't seem to like add up, but two things, make sure that they're vetted, number one, and, because they have to be outside for us, and then, make sure your numbers are correct, 'cause for a thousand dollars for nine hours, or eleven hours is kinda, is real cheap. That's, that's real cheap, so just for a grand, for him to say a thousand on that day, and then the other one is nine hours too, you know, so I just wanna make sure, you don't wanna get caught at the last minute, say, oh, man, I was, that's not what it was, so.
Well, then I have a question, since, since the mayor brought it up, do we have to use any of our officers at all?
Yes, you have to give our officers a chance.
Right, so that's what I thought.
That, that you'll find out, yes, you do.
Okay, that's what, and that's why I did a combination, because I did check into the fact that if I can't afford all of our officers, I was told that I could do a combination of security.
I just wanna make sure that your, your prices, 'cause it seems that, you know, sounds good, but I do know when things get started, and things happen, and, oh, I, I didn't mean that, or, or whatever, and not just officers, I'm talking about all the other things that you have, that you?
Well, I am, I have checking, double checking, and triple checking, but according to what I've been told, and the discussions that I had on the phone, I will have all these updated numbers, and everyone has gone down quite a bit, so, I don't wanna go just by word of mouth, I know we discussed, and so I, they are prepared to send me all of the documentation to reflect the conversation.
And, and also, before anything's voted on, you know it has to go through the lawyer, and then, the lawyers, the contracts?
Yes, yes, sir.
So, okay.
You took the last time, I wanted to try to, Mr. Mayor, head of mic, please.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're saying that we, we can approve it, and then send it to the lawyer, or you send the lawyer?
You don't approve the contract after you send it to the law, I mean, before you send it to the lawyer?
Well, no, no, I'm not talking about the contract, I'm actually talking about approval of the event altogether.
Well, but the, the contract, I'll probably vet it.
I, I did.
Trustee Wood?
The fireworks, did you get an updated contract for the fireworks, I don't see the fireworks contract in here, I didn't see it last time either, but I just wanna make sure.
Yes, that's updated.
It's still four thousand?
It's actually went to four thousand, it was five thousand, so I got a thousand.
You got it down, good. Yeah, right, keep talking, good job, so, so you got?
It's not easy, you got it.
We don't, oh, I know, but you don't have that contract here, so that's just one more, you have to get to the attorney?
Yes.
Before you can get it back to the board for approval, are you saying you're gonna try to have a packet to the attorney, to prove, buy the attorney to us, 'cause I have to make the packets this Friday, so I wanna make sure the mayor and I understand, so you're gonna attempt to get this whole packet, redone, new prices, and everything together, and provide it to the board by Friday, and you're asking the mayor to put it out the agenda, all of these different vendors for next Tuesday?
That is correct.
To be approved?
That is correct.
And the payments to be made through accounts payable, I just need to know, because I'm doing the agenda, and I wanna make sure we're all on the same page, okay?
Yes, that's.
So you understand, I know you're, you're new, and you're doing a great job, just wanna make sure that you don't understand the process, you definitely would have to get all this to the attorneys, and the packets been ready by Friday, so I can get everybody's packets, and then the mayor has to approve the agenda, to have every individual contract approved, I believe, Mr. Attorney, every contract has to be approved individually on next week's agenda, prior to the accounts payable, where everybody's fifty percent payments need to be approved, is that, are you understanding, Mayor, 'cause I'm?
I'm understanding, I'm just trying to figure out what the money's at, but okay.
Well, the money's in the budget, from what Trustee Bird said, I just wanna make sure you and I are on the same page, so we don't have a nine o'clock hour on Friday, where we're trying to figure out what's happening with the agenda, so I'm physically purposely saying all that right now?
Yes.
That should be the steps that we all plan on following?
Correct.
Okay, so that the, everything, the contracts should be approved prior to accounts payable, next week, vendor payments will be on the accounts payable, providing the attorney, all this passes her?
Absolutely, and she will have her offer raised on tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
Oh, okay, 'cause I'm looking at the, I guess this is the second one for July fourth, oh, July first, yeah. So you, okay, so I just wanna make sure that, are you, is there a certain dead time, deadline, or whatever, for the deposits, and are the, are the deposits non-refundable, or are they, you know, I'm just, but I guess we'll have to find it out when we see?
Uh, the deposits are, the deposits are non-refundable, but everything's on hold for me, so everything is ready to go.
And, and then also, to make sure that whoever's doing the contracts, as far as a clause, the clause, you gotta make sure is, if it's raining, or inclement weather at that time, that they'll, that they'll do another day, residents say, I'm not gonna do anything?
Yes, that is, that is in their contract.
No, no, I haven't seen, I'm just saying that you may wanna stipulate, tell them to stipulate that.
Right, so, and those things, we have discussed, so that is definitely in those contracts. So, and, and the way I've set it up is that we will not lose any of our, our deposits.
Well, you said it's not refundable, so?
Well, it's not refundable, but we will be able to make up, like a makeup day in this period, so no, no monies will be lost.
Trustee Wood?
Thank you, so the June event is nine hours, the July event is eleven hours, so it's two different hours, two different times, amounts of times.
Yes.
So you, it, you have to be careful, when you say it's a thousand dollars for each event, if it's anything to do with time, 'cause there's an additional two hours on the July event.
Uh, the way I, the way I discussed it with him is that we need more time for July, because our entertainment is only DJs, so I had to add, you know, enough DJs to cover
But there was something you said earlier, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to take notes and listen, you said something about a thousand dollars for each event, or something like that, so if it's, if it's anything that's time dependent, there's nine hours on June, and there's eleven hours on July, so if there's anything that's time dependent, July might be a little bit more cost, as much as you'd be aware, when we figure your deposit out.
Oh, well, that, that was already discussed.
Okay.
So all of the costs and the times has been discussed today, and that's what's going to reflect in the paperwork that we received.
And I was wondering, was there any deposits made last time, that we, that they, people are holding for us, because they knew we were rescheduling, or did that all get, it's all washed out?
Whatever, whoever was on this project before, the seventeen thousand dollars, it, it went away.
I just wanted to know if any of the vendors said, okay, we got a deposit, it's non-refundable, but we'll hold this until the next time, I don't know if that's true or not.
You, you mean from, what I'm doing, or what was done previously?
What was done previously, when we did not have the event, but we had scheduled some vendors?
Yes.
I was wondering, was there any vendors that are holding money contingent on, or moving it to another date?
Uh, from my understanding, that seventeen thousand dollars that was given to vendors in the past for a deposit, has all been lost, there was no refund of those vendors from the last.
And no carryovers?
Is no carryovers.
My last question, if you look at what Bright Star is charging for the June seventeenth, and what they're charging for the July fourteenth is double, are they planning on bringing a separate ambulance out here, or they're using the same one, and then if it gets called, they use mutual aid, that's what I'm trying to find out?
Mr. Stan from Bright Star is the one that I'm in contact with, and so, again, just with the same as with Chief Barrett, whatever they're giving us for the concert, will not interfere with their day-to-day operations.
Okay, I'm just, so, so, they're gonna, this is a separate ambulance?
Yes.
And you, you need to check on that to make sure, 'cause why would they, because if, if they have to, they have mutual aid, so we have to, someone needs it in the city, there's gonna be another ambulance, or this ambulance strictly just for this event, sits there for just this event, and not be involved in the village at all?
Well, you know what, that's, that's something I will address with Stan, but I, I understand that they do these things in shifts, so?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, is that ambulance gonna be dedicated to the event, or that ambulance gonna be out here for the village, and if they have calls in the village, they'll bring a mutual aid, and be stationed after that, one of them's gone, that's what I'm looking, 'cause you're paying as if you have your own standalone ambulance for that event, that event only?
Uh, for sixteen hundred dollars?
Yeah.
That is the understanding, and I will clarify that, but that is the understanding, that we will have our own ambulance stationed at the event.
Yeah, you need to get that right, 'cause I don't see why they would do that, but that's, I don't know what you, would agree with your neighbor.
Yeah, because see, because everyone that, all of the vendors I've spoken with is, they understand the hours that's involved.
I'm not worried about, I'm just taking, making sure that, that the one he has here is not the one that's stationed for the village also.
Okay, I, I will.
So why would he have two, if, if he can do with one, that's one of that?
Well, I, no, I, we're only gonna have one ambulance, right?
I'm talking about, you're asking to have, well, I'm looking at the price, would be a separate ambulance for just the event, and the event only?
Yes.
I don't see why he would do that if he has one here, and if someone in the village has to use it, then they bring another one in through mutual aid, so what you're saying, he's gonna have his own sitting here for just this event, and not using it for anything else?
That is, yes.
Okay, well, you need to make sure, 'cause that leaves us, that would sound how they do it, I understand what you're saying, I'm just, give your heads up.
Okay, so, uh, um, when they, when they send over the updated paperwork with the new pricing?
Mm-hmm, they're gonna look at it, yeah.
Yes, and then I will make sure that it's stipulated that this ambulance will be stationed for this event, and it will be invited.
Usually when we have events, we don't have separate ambulance, when we had the last event, no, we have that one ambulance.
Are they, are, they aware of this, they themselves?
No, I mean, they would, the last event we had, we had, we did the fireworks last, you had one ambulance, you didn't have one, it was sitting here, but if they had to do something in the village, they went over there and took care of that, and then they brought a mutual aid one in.
Okay, so just switch out?
Yeah.
Okay, I will confirm.
But I'm just saying, they're charging as if they have their own, just for this.
Yeah, that's, that's how we, that's the conversation, is that we, we need?
That's why I say I don't understand why they would do that, they do have mutual aid, that's my only.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure it's wired.
Trustee?
That was, that was sixteen hundred dollars for the, for the ambulance, you said?
Yes, it says sixteen, eighteen hundred.
Eight, well, that, that sounds like?
One is eighteen hundred, and the other one is thirty-six hundred.
So all of that has gone down?
And I'm just saying?
It sounds like they're gonna have a BLS rig sitting out there for the concert, and then have both, I bet that both ambulances will be sitting there, that way ALS hamsters can cover the town, and that BLS will be here to cover the grounds, it's like an eight car.
I've never seen that, but okay.
That's how we used to do it.
I've never seen two ambulance sitting out there. But?
Well, we'll get, we'll get it arrived, so we have a very, very, very concise understanding.
Any other questions, or you, you have anything else?
That's all on the festivals, done with that part, unless anyone has questions.
All righty, you got a tall order between now and next week, okay, next item, discussion to amend ordinance, number seventeen dash zero zero six, an ordinance amending the chapter sixty-six of the village code to include provisions regarding honorary designations, trustee Bill.
Thank you, Mayor, I just, this is something we've been working on for a while, but, you know, a couple of the ward members here doesn't even know who some of these people are, and neither do half the residents, so I mean, to go out and collect signatures for something that people really are gonna keep questioning, who is this, and why is this? This is basically recognition for, you know, the other, and the street signs must have served as elected or appointed official, no less than twelve years, and then I'd like to change the thing, and it says, you know, for fifty signatures or more, with board approval, or be an employee of good standing over thirty years. The second one, the building one, that's just board approval, and, you know, you put it in proximity of where they lived, their general neighborhood, you know, like Aiman Darnell, Art Johnson, Stoffrey, Ed Myers, you know, some of these guys need to be recognized why they're still here. Your, your, your deserving of a sign, Trustee Woods is deserving of a sign now, because of the years of service, you know, you guys say you don't want them now, you want them with your help, but some of these people would probably like to see some recognition, well, a couple of these guys have already passed away, and some of them are knocking on the door, and, you know, I'd like to see them, I'd like to see some of the recognition done before, before it's too late, maybe they'd be proud of the work they did. And I've, I've submitted to everybody a copy of the ordinance, and then a list of this thirteen names I have right now, and anybody else has any names or something, bring them up.
No, what I want you to do is, um, you said you're gonna change?
I, I, I've made, on this copy here, I put down, no less than, you know, I took, it says no less than twelve years out, and I put thirty years of employee good, or employee of good standing over thirty, of thirty years plus, service to the town.
Where, where is that, is that on the front page? Oh, oh, oh.
It's not here.
So, you, what you're doing is asking.
Just to change the verbiage.
To have the, uh, to have it changed.
Just change the verbiage on it.
Okay.
And I'll submit this to Trustee Coleman.
Get that verbiage to, uh, there's not a deadline for it, is there?
No, no, I just.
Okay, well, get the verbiage, and so you can go before the, um.
I guess before the ordinance review.
Okay, ordinance review, and then they can, then they can bring it back to the board.
And then, um, instead of, it's like, on number C, it says fifty signatures, I just wrote board approval. And the other one for, for a building designation or a sign, it says, you know, that's no less than twenty years, this department had no less than twenty years, which, that's probably fine. And then I put this a hundred and fifty signatures, that's just board approval, because the people that we're talking about, half, half the town doesn't know their, you know, now we started fresh, you know, for, for all of us, you know. Ed Myers got fifty-plus years, Stoffrey had fifty years, Sinek forty-five years. I, when I, when I leave here in next month, forty-three years. Trustee, you know, Trustee Williams is on her, on her third term, here on your fourth term. I just, I just wanna see people recognize what they've done, you know, for the betterment of the community, and the time they've put in. I've spent my entire adult life working for this town.
Okay, well, then you can get the, uh, verbiage, and then have the, uh, ordinance review committee look it over, and present it back to the board, and then get it voted on.
Thank you so much for consideration.
Uh, Trustee Williams, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Trustee Tate, you have a question mark here.
He didn't know what he meant.
But he, he didn't serve twelve years. We don't, we don't school board Eamon? I, I mean, this is something that you need to talk to the ordinance, are we gonna, every ordinance they serve that? Or is this a village board and stuff?
I was just looking at, I don't know how long he served, he served like two, two, two different times at a board, correct? Or is he trustee twice?
Twelve years. It's a three-year, it's, uh, three terms for trustee.
It says three terms of a sophomore's trustee.
Yeah.
And I know for a fact he didn't do three terms. That's my question, man.
I mean, you gotta be careful, because then everybody, you serve like, say, I served four years on the last side. That's not what it's about.
We're not going to, that would, you have to go to the school board, to the local board, and all different boards, to see what, how many years they served, so I don't, would you focus on the village board? And then turn all this to the ordinance review committee? So, I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, because I, you know, I've got some other guys that have been, like, Eamon had forty-five years. Thirty-six years.
I know, I'm saying, he's served.
Okay, first, 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 hold on, hold on, first of all, um, are you, when you said that they're elected or appointed, less than twelve years, and all these people here, are you asking, are you saying that, that you recommend that they get assigned?
Well, I, it's just for consideration, I mean, there's a lot of.
Because a lot of them weren't, weren't, uh, elected officials.
Right, and they're, or, or, you know, you've got one, two, three, four assistant directors that were either a director or an assistant director.
But they, but they still weren't elected officials.
For thirty-plus years, yeah. And I, I usually just name it, as I was, as I was going through this, of, you know, of years of service, of thirty-plus years of service.
When you read the ordinance, it says for years of service for ordinance, what's the twenty-year plus? I don't hear anything about it.
I don't see anything about it.
If you read the ordinance, there's stipulations.
That's, that's for building and plaques.
Building and plaques, well, what capacity?
It says must have served as elected or appointed official or a department.
Appointed, that's what.
For no less than twenty years.
Elected or appointed official, so the people that you're referring to, an assistant, fire.
Or department head.
Or department heads.
For no less than twenty years.
There you go. So, you gotta read that, when you review this ordinance with the ordinance review committee, you have to take all of that into consideration, it's not just, it's not just elected officials, it's people like, like you said, chief managers, and some of these assistant people and everything. You gotta look at the whole ordinance. Appointed and elected and served with capacity as department heads, years of service, and then you guys become the new, uh, ordinance, you have to change those for guys, the ordinance. I just wanted to point it out, it's not just elected officials. And I don't know if it says anything about whether or not you're still in that position, however you're, I'm no longer in that position, but that's something you all would have to work out with ordinance review committee.
Trustee, correct.
Thank you. A question for you, so, let's see, it's about five or six people on here with over twenty years. I don't believe we have five buildings to name, uh, after each of these people, so how? So, you just want them to just have a street sign and not an actual plaque? Gotcha, just wanted to clear, just wanted to clarify, just wanted to clarify.
So, you basically wanna change the ordinance to read whatever it is you wanted to read. And then, what you wanna do is present it to the, uh, ordinance review, they bring it back to the board. All right. Okay, next item is, um, discussion of Bright Star contract renewal.
Thank you, Mary, one more time. I, I'm recommending that we go with option two for this, because, you know, if I, my, my, he's not failing, I mean, we, uh, we had to allocate money from the water fund, three hundred and fifty thousand to pay for the EMTs, and two hundred and fifty thousand to pay for the contractor, the ambulance, correct? That sounds about right, that's six hundred thousand dollars, and we can get option two, where we don't pay. Where all we do is pay the ambulance company, they pay all payroll, insurance, all their stuff, for four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That's a savings of a hundred and eighty grand a year. Option two.
For four, option? Two was four hundred and twenty thousand?
Yeah, four twenty, because we borrowed, we borrowed six hundred grand to, to, to put this whole thing in motion, to cover the EMTs for the first year, three hundred and fifty grand, and we borrowed two fifty to, uh, start the contract off, because remember, it was one ninety and three fifty, their contract was one ninety, and it's getting ready to go on. It goes up November first, or, uh, May first, I'm sorry. Right, that's board approval, and I also, also recommend that we sign a contract for two years, that we don't have to renegotiate it the second time.
Well, the reason why you signed it for one year is because hopefully your ambulance is gonna be ready, and, and if signed for two years, now you're gonna be paying twice.
And, and also, in, in this, in this, this is the latest contract, the attorney has, as we speak, she's reviewing the, some of the verbiage, and it says also in the very first paragraph, and I believe it's on all of them, this contract can be amended by both parties freely at any time. So, if our, say, we sign this contract in May first and November first, our ambulance is cleared to run, we go back and negotiate, and we go back to collecting fifty percent of our medical billing, so we can start paying ourselves back. And then also, so what she's looking at in the back here, is they changed the clause, it says, in the event South Village defaults on payments sixty days, Bright Star Ambulance will term, can terminate the contract without sixty-day written notice. This even if Bright Star terminates, you know, they changed.
That's something they need to change, and I think she, I think that's something they need to change.
And, and, and what, it's at the lawyers right now, getting, you know, verbiage for the, uh, the penalty clause, and there was one other thing he told me, start date, yeah, but I don't think, I, he, he told me today, he wanted to get start date along.
So, you're, you're, okay, your recommendation is, is, uh, item or number two?
Yes, because even if we look at the other one, option one, is, uh, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, that's just for one paramedic, that's all you get. And we're using their ambulance to ours clears, and we have, we have to pay out of our pocket. You see what payroll's been for the EMTs, it's been nine thousand dollars every two weeks. That's just for three months. And now we gotta start paying overtime for them, because if they're gonna work for Bright Star, we're gonna save a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, that, then I'm just looking for where it says one or?
It was in your packet, it's got like right here, it says one.
No, no, I've seen one and two, I'm not talking about, I'm talking about as far as staffing.
Well, well, uh, the four twenty, that's what Chief was talking about, sitting here last week. That, that covers everything, we don't, we, we.
Okay, so number two.
Basically, we're gonna pay them thirty-five thousand dollars a month.
Yeah, so that, that, that'll go away.
Right, we're just paying thirty-five thousand flat, and we don't have to pay the nine thousand dollars in overtime, and possibly I R M R F, who knows how that's gonna work out.
Yeah.
So, it's a base savings, a starting, starting savings of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year if we do it this way. I, I, I've been, I've been on this for two years, about, trying to get that stuff put in there. They're not biting on it until we get, until it passes. Because right now, they're getting a hundred percent of the bill.
I'm waiting for that, because it already said that we can, we can, um.
Renegotiate anytime.
Well, we can come out of the contract at any time.
And you wanna change the contract to expire maybe eighteen, twenty, twenty-five?
Basically, what you're asking the board, is you recommending that they go with number two option?
Four twenty.
And you have any questions on that?
Isn't that actually the chief's one?
Yeah, the second time, it, it makes more sense.
Trustee Williams.
Uh, the other question was the term, um, that contract, it said twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six. Well, now we're two, two, we're getting.
To twenty twenty-five.
They won't go less than two.
Two years, they want two years.
One year, if I understand correctly, Bright Star only approved this one.
Right.
They might have to do two, and I think the chief down in the alley two, or you were somebody negotiating two years, but the first line does say that we can, we can, um, I bet the contract, if both parties agree, that you've got a verbal contract with them, that they will allow us to make the cap, implement the contract, and we need the ambulance, but it never hurts to have a little clause in there about the ambulance.
And I'll take that one back, Chief.
I mean, it just makes sense, because people say, I said that, but if it's not right, then they can always say two.
And what we always said is not right, but didn't happen.
It happened.
All right. Make sure that you tell the chief that, you know.
We want that right.
Trustee, uh, correct.
Thanks, thanks, Mary. So, um, the last contract from twenty twenty-two was a one-year contract, so I'm not sure why they only wanna do three-year contracts, if we have to talk them down to two years. It shouldn't be a one-year contract, it should be year to year. I mean, I get why they want two years, of course, more security, but it should be one year, uh, because the case or situation that we do wanna brief, uh, or, you know, let's say, ambulance isn't ready until, let's just say next April, there's no point in having another year of the contract. And my second thing, I heard you, Trustee, Trustee Bill, you said that chief doesn't wanna have the start date be May seventeenth, and he wants it to be May first, well, that's not right either, because then, do we pay the old rate for a month? Do we pay the new rate for that month, and technically, we shouldn't be paying that? So, I think it should start May seventeenth, and we just pay half that month, the old rate, half that month, the new rate, call it a day. That's how it should be.
He, didn't you say chief is waiting that May first date, he is going with the, sticking with the seventeenth? If I heard you.
I don't.
Yeah, he's, he was gonna try to change the date, but he's not.
Okay.
But in reference to what you said earlier, it's Mary, I'm sorry, what you said earlier, um, I'm trying to keep my head straight, my, my question's straight, um, in reference to what you said earlier about the one-year contract, I think the reason why chief said two years is to lock them in at a rate, because things are going up so much, including the cause of EMTs and paramedics. If I'm not mistaken, that's why he suggested we do the three-year, but we wouldn't go with that. That if we locked it in at the rate of two, and then we could negotiate, I think that was the art to our advantage. Um, that's, if I'm right, if I remember correctly. Just add those little words.
Yeah, but then that's, again, that's if both parties agree, you know, so, I mean, what if Bright Star says, well, we don't wanna agree to renegotiate it, and then, like, we can't renegotiate at that point, and we're stuck to the contract for two years. I think we should ask the language in here to protect us. I know it's right now, it's with the attorney, um, and I think that we already sent option two to the attorney, so, uh, and I think it's just a matter of her getting back to us, and then we vote on it.
If worse comes to worse, we need to get a fifteen-minute head start next week before the meeting, to, to review this.
You mean the new one?
To pass it. You know, if we, if we, if we're gonna pass this next week, if we get the new contract back with the correct verbiage that we want.
I see what you're saying.
And we start at fifteen minutes early, or half hour early next week, and then we go do it early committee meeting, and then go to the board.
We have a discussion before?
Right.
Okay.
Just to be safe.
Shouldn't be a problem.
I, I, you know, I, we've been beating this, we've been beating this for, for a couple of months now, it's time to put it to bed.
So, Mr. Mayor, you're saying to put the new contract on the agenda.
Yes.
At an early board meeting at six thirty?
Yeah.
And have it placed on the agenda for approval at seven o'clock P M?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so you, I just wanna explain, so, the reason I was pushing both of these things is, six weeks, we're done. I'm just trying to put some stuff to bed.
I understand, I have a question there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm, so, I remember Chief presented this contract to us, he specifically said about, you know, he was confident in option two, uh, at the higher price, because he was confident we can get the GMT money start rolling in. So, if that's the case, there's no point in having a two-year contract, because why would we sign it? If we're confident that we can get our ambulance up and running, and have our own personnel in year one, to me, we should only sign a one-year contract, I mean, that's just my opinion. Yeah, I mean, I get what you're saying, how, you know, we're trying to lock the price in, because next year it could go up to five hundred thousand, get that totally, or six hundred fifty. I mean, every year it's gonna go up, I mean, regardless, I mean. It's not even writing.
It is, it's a.
At three percent?
That, last, last paragraph. Mr. Mayor?
Are you done, Trustee?
Uh, yeah, no, I'm just saying, I just wanna make sure that we're, we're protected, so, but also make sure that we're not, I wouldn't say bullied into a second year, but we don't really need a second year if we expect to have our ambulance up and running with our personnel ready to go by the time year two gets here. I don't wanna waste extra money being locked into a contract, and pressure our team to not negotiate with us to reopen that contract, then it does, like, we're just wasting money at that point. I would say so, I mean.
Mr. Mayor?
Chief for? It has moving parts from what I remember, getting the GMT is not a given, there's, uh, uh, you have to be approved, you have to have the ambulance, and then you have to go through the GMT, and there has to be a time period, so I think that's another reason why we can't get caught short if we only do a one-year contract, and we don't have all of those moving parts in order, and we could be without an ambulance, because they might come back to us and say, well, now it's not four twenty anymore, it's six fifty. That's, I, I'm just trying to remember, we talked about this to death, and I'm trying to remember all of the situations that he brought to us.
Trustee, that, Trustee Coleman?
And to add to that, Trustee Williams, well, we also need, I wish that the chief was here, so that he could reiterate some of the advantages of having a two-year contract. I mean, right now, it's, um, I mean, he seems to be the expert, uh, regarding this, so.
Well, we can bring him in to the next meeting at six thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause I'm sure, I'm sure there are some advances.
You're gonna, hopefully, you're gonna have a new contract.
A two-year contract that we don't know about.
No, no, what I'm saying is, you're gonna discuss the contract, I guess it's gonna be finalized, so you can have it in hand next week, and we discuss it at six thirty, and it'll be on the agenda, to be voted on itself. And we'll have the chief here.
Okay.
Any other question? Oh, you got something else? All right, uh. Okay, item seven, financial update, updates, Trustee Burns, Trustee Williams.
Okay, so, um, there's some meetings that's, uh, on the table that we're gonna have clarity on. Um, the seventy-eight thousand dollars, and he's coming up, there is under investigation.
Somebody said they can't hear.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. The seventy-eight thousand dollars that's, uh, that continues to come up, that's under investigation. I wa, I'm not sure what, can the mayor give me clarity on what steps and what procedures constitutes an investigation? Is there a police report that has been filed, or what, what constitutes the investigation? Because the mayor says it's under investigation.
And that's what I was told, that it's under investigation. I don't have any update for you, when you guys met the other day, did you ask any of those questions? Because as of right now, I was told, that's why I was telling you that it was still under investigation. Not only just that, but the other, I think it was nine. Not only just that, but the other, I think it was nine thousand or whatever it was. Both of those items are still under investigation the way I was told. So if I'd be telling you anything else, I would be, I would be speculating now.
Right, and so I'm saying, um, you asked me, I asked someone, who? Yes, you, you think I'm supposed to ask?
No, 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 I'm saying, did you ask anything about this?
Oh, no.
Okay, cuz I haven't, I, I'm not, I haven't heard anything. So when I hear, I'm definitely gonna tell you guys.
So who, who?
Who's doing the investigation? Two different people. For the, uh, money upfront, that's being handled through the police department. Because that was something that was handled in-house. The other part will be handled through the auditors.
The auditors?
The auditors, and because how would you know? I mean, I wouldn't know, they would be the ones where they go through the books, they can show and be able to tell you what it is that.
Okay, so, uh, from what I understand is that with the investigation and, and the recs, the recs and all of that, from what I understand, the investigation was all cash? So what the conversation we did have is that the credit cards, the transfers, the checks, they are all accounted for. It's just the cash?
Okay, like I said, I, I have a, I can't answer that cuz I, you know, I'll be speculating.
Okay. Okay, so, um, so we'll have to wait for the files.
Well, the auditors will, will tell you, it probably tell you up to the date if it happened or if it did not happen. So for me to say, and to say something like that right now, I would be speculating and you don't wanna do that when it comes to, uh, anything missing or whatever, cuz it may or may not, but that's.
Okay, so the auditors, if we, okay, so you're saying that the auditors are investigating it, but?
They're investigating seventy-eight, but that's, that's part of, I guess that's part of, um, transfers or whatever, I don't know.
So who, who, what auditors, we're not?
We have, we have, Baker Tilly is our auditors now, Baker Tilly.
So are they working or not?
They haven't, they haven't started yet. No, we have to get everything, you have to put everything, you just, they just don't walk in and start, they have to, it's, it's a portal that they put in. Certain things are put in and they pull from that. There's a process. No, they, they weren't due to start anyway until, um, April, this is April.
Uh, we got, we got memo from February twenty, saying that it would be done if the audit, but.
Okay, well, that might have been happening at that time, but now things have changed, as you know, so that pushed everything back.
Okay, so, uh, okay, so Baker Tilly, is that?
That's our auditors.
Who's gonna funnel something through the, the, uh, portal for the big star?
That would be in the finance department.
And you know who that is?
Right now, the person that you did have is not here, so.
No, no, I mean, the finance department, that person that.
That's what I'm saying, the person that was, that was doing it is not there.
Yeah, I don't wanna talk about her.
No, I'm saying, but you're saying that.
I just wanna talk about the people that's in, that's here. I mean, who's going to be putting the information through the portal that's already in our finance department?
Okay.
I don't wanna talk about.
Okay, well, I'm just telling you what, what, what's going on, I mean.
I'm saying, I just want, so.
It will be, it will be someone in the finance department, I'll put it that way.
Are you going to appoint that person to do it?
Yeah, I'm gonna appoint that person to do it.
And do you know how soon they'll start?
Hopefully, that if I get everything that I'm trying to get back now, to make sure that the person I do fits that criteria, hopefully by Friday.
By Friday?
And I'll let the board know exactly who it is and, uh, what they'll be doing.
Okay, so we have, uh.
But we will still have to hire someone because. Because we're one person short.
And are you, I know you said you have a job posted on last Friday, are we going to post that this week?
Well, well, that, that's another thing that I'll have to inform the board. I mean, if it's gonna be in-house, I'll still have to post for a position. It may not be that position, but it has to be for a position because we are down.
So you, you think we might do an in-house?
Hopefully, that'd be my best thing to do at this particular point in time because I don't have to go through the process of trying to train someone to do something. You know, saying what?
We have someone in-house that's qualified to be doing it?
That's what I'm trying to find out.
No, I was gonna ask about the police, the police, uh, the police's investigation.
Wait a minute, no, okay.
Which is, no, no, I'm gonna stay.
Okay, but cuz this is an investigation, okay, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I'm not gonna talk about, I'll, I'll hold my question so we can, you know, for, for the sake of continuity, further, uh, continue this about the seventy-eight, uh, thousand. So, Trustee Williams, if you will, if you have any questions pertaining to seventy-eight.
I'm not through, so what I wanna know is one thing. I'm very concerned about the letter that we received or the memo, and I'm concerned because a particular individual was literally mentioned in that memo. I wanna know, um, if there's anything that you can do to dissolve that memo.
Which memo are we talking about?
The, the memo that a doctor, our past director of finance had given all of us, saying that the seventy-eight thousand dollars was missing.
Okay.
And that he named the person.
Okay.
So that person's name to me, I'm trying, how do we exonerate that person's name?
What do you mean exonerate?
How do we, uh, how do we take that person's name and not have that person, uh, associated with that, that dollar?
I'm not understanding, when you, when you wanna retract that letter that someone else wrote or?
Well, we want to, I mean, if, if, my thing is that we don't know who's investigating it.
I told you who was investigating, the auditors.
Well, the auditors is not investig, I mean, the auditors are investigating. But it hasn't begun.
Okay, I, I mean, the reason why the auditors are doing it is they're qualified to do it.
Okay, so that person's name is gonna continue to stay attached to this situation?
I'm, I'm trying to figure how would you detach? If a person wrote a memo, you gonna take it out of the memo that they wrote?
So, so has this person been, uh, spoken with or talked to concerning his name being attached to such a?
I'm not understanding that, I mean, if someone named a person, you saying, what are you, what are you asking?
As the mayor, if someone says that, if some of your director of finance has given you a, a letter or a memo saying that one of your employees stole seventy-eight thousand dollars, have you addressed that with that person, uh, one-on-one?
Have I addressed it to that person one-on-one? No. Because I, I, because I'm more about what that person said, another person said what this person said. So therefore, you asking me, am I gonna listen? That's why you have a third party, because if I say something, it'll be that, you know, you're biased or you're against or whatever the case may be. So I can't, I can't act on what someone else said about another person.
And you don't even address the person that's being.
I'm becoming, I'm accusing him. And we have to make sure that before you start pointing fingers, that, that, that you have a reason. So that's a liability, and you got the lawyer sitting right here, he'll tell you exactly what I'm saying. You know, how am I gonna, now I'm gonna say, okay, if you're guilty, or are you guilty, or whatever the case may be. I haven't, I haven't addressed it until I find out that that is the case. I mean, to walk up to him and say, is that true? How, how do you do that?
So, ca, ca, so the Baker Tilly in these audits, and that's the person that's doing the audit, um, are we going to have this to be indefinite, or are we going to have a timeframe that we can ask these auditors to investigate and?
Oh, they're gonna investigate because it was, it was mentioned, so it won't be investigated. As people already know, we had a audit, I think it was two years ago, whatever, that it was a, um, what was it? We had an, um, forensic audit. And the regular audit was put on hold to that for forensic audit was done. Because they can't, they can't do one, but you got, you got, I'm going forensic audit, so, and they're looking for, whatever it is, we have forensic audit, you gotta give them a scope what it is you're looking for.
So this, this audit will be done under the guise of forensic audit?
No.
Just our regular, just our regular audit?
Uh, it is, but I'm saying is, they're gonna be, I mean, how, how would I know what to look for?
No, I know you don't, you said our auditors will be looking.
Yes, that's why I said auditors.
I just wanna, I just wanna know if there's going to be an endpoint to it, or is this?
Well, whenever they find, whenever they find either yes or no, whenever they find out, yeah.
And this is all contingent upon us giving the auditors the information?
No, they're gonna ask you for information.
Right, I'm just saying, this is.
For that particular instance that you're talking about, not the, the audit itself, yes, they're gonna, there's other information that they have to put in, as I said, the portal, yes.
Okay, so when are we actually going to, so who's doing bank reconciliations, which is what the auditors are waiting for and order for?
Some of them started already, some of the bank recs, I've already started.
Okay.
And, um, we have, um, well, the people up the front, um, are doing some of the banks recs right now. So that's, they're doing it in regards to their day-to-day stuff too.
Okay.
So we got two other people that, that we got doing that.
Okay, so I got a, I got a memo saying that, um, some of the people up front, they are doing audits. Is that, have they been trained to do these audits?
You said, you said bank recs.
Have they been trained to do?
They've been trained to do bank recs, not audits.
Okay, bank recs, all right, so good, good. And the only reason why I ask you is because I know that we have a stop on our being able to get financial assistance. And we're like three years behind in audits and we cannot get any grants.
Really, two years behind?
Well, if we don't get started, we, this, this is.
I mean, well, yeah, well, no, you need two years, twenty?
Twenty, twenty-two.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
That's it.
Now we want to twenty.
And, and that's not gonna happen until after, twenty, twenty-three, it will happen after June.
Right, we just, we, we just need money. And, uh, I know our air strips and all of those things are getting ready to come and do, um, for the water, the air strips for the water.
What do you mean come do?
Well, we have to get ready to, it's time to get ready to.
Boy, that's, that's, that's.
And we know, I know we need a, uh, we need a grant for that.
Okay.
And so as long as we're not up to date on the audits, we can't get grants, we'll go anywhere.
Well, we have things in place, but you know, we're gonna, we're gonna survive, it's gonna happen.
Okay, can, so can we, can we get a, some type of date as to, because we're getting ready to go into another fiscal year and we are already two years behind. How soon will we get a bank recs to an auditor to start the twenty-twenty-two? Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. How soon will we get something in that portal to Baker Tilly so they can, they can start?
We, as we stated, we do have things already started. Um, we have to find out from them, us knowing what happened last year with the audit from Melcooper. So we kinda know what we need, so it's just a matter of, um, putting it in the, putting it in the portal and getting the information to put in there. So right now, we're a little behind, but I'm looking to make sure that we, we, yeah, get that done so we can get this one. Hopefully, we can get this, um, audit done by October.
So it'll be, so we, so, so we wanna be having it done by October?
Hopefully, yes.
Okay. And so if we have it done by October, then we should.
Start the next one.
And so now we should, so we should be having someone begin to funnel things through that portal?
That's what I said, that's what I'm gonna be.
Immediately.
They're working on that, they're working, they're, they're working on, on, on getting items in the portal for the audit, they're working on that. And as you stated, that's part of the bank recs.
All right, Mr. Mayor, is there anything else, Mayor? Thank you so much for being patient with you and, and, uh, with these questions, thank you so much. Okay, that was everything. I just know that, um, I want to get into position where we can be able to apply for grants. There's so many things that we want to do, and that we're trying to do, and we are held up drastically from doing that because we can't get these audits up and running. And so, uh, I know the mayor has plans for this village and for the streets and lights and all the stuff that, you know, he's discussed, and I know that having these, um, the state fund, funding is one of the major parts of us completing these tasks, so, thank you, Mayor, very much. Trustee Williams, I think.
Thank you. So Trustee Burns and I did meet with the senior accountant on Friday, and, um, she did give us some insight. And we asked some very pointed questions. Number one, we talked about the budget. Nobody's working on the budget right now. And it can't be because somebody was looking on since February. Nobody's working on the budget right now, this is April. So that, that, that's unacceptable. We've got four people working in the finance department. Nobody's working on the budget that's about to expire in a couple of weeks. Nobody's working on the new budget that we're gonna start, starting May one. So when, um, you say that you were gonna post the finance director position last Friday, but now you said you might be going a different way, the problem is, we need a director of finance, in our opinion, and we've talked about this as a board, that's why I feel comfortable in saying, in our opinion, um, we've said this before, we need a director of finance. We want somebody that's here on a day-to-day basis, as a staff member, because this is what has happened in our finance department. We don't have anybody working on our budget. Our audit started for twenty-twenty-one in September, and we still don't have any progress as far as being able to turn it over to the auditors. Um, we said we were gonna turn it over in February, well, actually, we said December, then January, then February. Then we said we were gonna do it in April, and now we said we might be done by October. And that's just, to me, when, after speaking to the senior accountant, I, I had more questions than I had answers at that point. So I decided to talk to Baker Tilly myself, and I talked to one of the senior auditors there, and they said they will not be responsible for doing, helping us with our bank recs to get us to the point where we can turn it over to them. You can't even turn it over to them until the bank recs are done. And from what the senior accountant told us, they're having a difficulty, um, reconciling the bank statements of the bank recs because of the fact that so much cash was missing during those periods, and they can't reconcile the cash. That's exactly what she said, they cannot reconcile the cash, because like Trustee Burns said, the checks and the credit cards went, all that information was properly, you know, posted, went to the bank and everything, no cash and went to the bank. They're assuming up to a total of seventy-eight thousand dollars. This is during the period of twenty-twenty-one. So that's very concerning because in-house, we have not been able to reconcile our own bank accounts. So I, 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 I don't feel comfortable with continuing, so now we have people that work our front desk doing bank audits. They said, you said they were trained, but by whom and to what extent? Because I don't think they're trained, um, even if they're doing the minor accounts, it's the larger accounts that we have an issue with. So when I spoke to Baker Tilly, they suggested we get somebody in-house immediately just to focus on bank recs. That's it, just bank recs, and do twenty-twenty-one and then immediately go into twenty-one, twenty-two because how much money are we talking about? When did it start? And did it even end for that audit year, period? So we might be going even further into twenty-one, twenty-two with missing cash. And depending on the dollar amount, if it's less than seventy-eight thousand dollars, we're okay, but not okay. But if it's more than seventy-eight thousand dollars, there's gotta be an immediate investigation by someone other than, the auditors are not investigating seventy-eight thousand. They will investigate the audit after the audit is done, and they'll put the audit findings in, but they're not gonna investigate per se where the money is, that's where the forensic audit comes in, after the audit. Well, we gotta complete the audit, but I was confused by something you said, Mr. Mayor. You said something about trying to find somebody in-house. We've got people in-house and it's not getting done. We need fresh eyes on the finance department, because apparently they've been working on this in September, and from what we spoke with the senior accountant, there's a lot of unrecognizable, um, especially cash, and a lot of entries that they can't put together right now. And I, I thought you were gonna post a position, I don't know why you didn't post a position. We want a finance director, we've asked you on top, on top many, many times to please post that position. Now we don't have, we're not moving forward with our budget, our audit is behind, now we're just throwing it out through October. We've had December, January, February, uh, now we got October, it's just, it's just not the right thing to do. So we also talked about getting part-time assistants just to concentrate on doing the bank recs or the audit, right? And Baker Tilly, our auditors that we're gonna turn this over to, said they cannot even begin the audit, so all the bank recs are up to date. And so far, we've been working on it since September. We need to bring somebody in to get our bank recs done. The people that we have working with us do great jobs on a lot of things, but apparently, they, they can't get the bank recs done. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'm asking is, what are we gonna do to bring something in to do the bank recs? And how soon are we gonna post the finance director position? Like, we asked you.
Are you done? For now, okay, well, for now.
I have another question.
Okay, well, for now, you made the comment that you don't think that the people up front are trained? How would you know that?
I, I said, have they been trained?
No, no, you, no, no, you said. No, no, you said, I don't think that the people up front are trained to do bank recs.
When we got two people to go all the way to Wisconsin to get trained on our civic software, they had to go do an actual class in order to do the bank recs. They did a seminar in order to get trained to do these bank recs. So my question is, did they go to a seminar and get trained on how to work the civic software? That's what I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, how were they trained? Because apparently, we've got people that work our front desk.
See, that's what I'm saying, you all get involved in day-to-day operations and you really don't know, you speculate. But I did, and I'll say it again, they are doing bank recs. Now, I'm sure that they're doing them correctly, because if they're not, then, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert to know and I don't know who else is, I don't know if you're an expert to know if they're being trained properly. But I do know that they're being trained.
Mr. Mayor, the reason why I said I wasn't gonna be quite done yet is because, well, yes, sir, because you just said something that doesn't make, you said, I don't need to do anything with the day-to-day operations. However, trustees are responsible for the village residents' finances. And I have sent many, many emails.
Money and legislation. And Lori will tell you that right now.
You can talk openly all the time. I have sent many emails asking how far we are with the bank recs. What, what is the last month that's been done specifically on the larger, I'm not getting any response. So what I'm not getting responded to from the people that need to give us the answers as trustees, that's why I go to the auditor and ask the question. But what you just said, Mr. Mayor, you can't assume just because somebody said they're trained, that they're trained. We're not getting it done. We can't afford to wait any longer.
Being done.
Can we get a finance director?
I told you, I just got to answer what trustee Burns said. I said I would, I would inform the board back before the end of the week as to which direction it's going to be going. I'm trying to find that, I'm, I'm working on that as we speak. You get a person that's qualified so you don't have to go through a training and a, and a, and a learning curve.
So by Friday, you're gonna, you're gonna notify us, notify how? By Friday, you're gonna notify us? By Friday, you're gonna, Mr. Mayor, by Friday, you said you're gonna notify us? By email, by, how are you gonna notify us?
Email.
You're gonna notify the board on Friday, how?
No, I'll notify the clerk on the email.
In the absence of the clerk, sir, that.
Okay, then.
Unless she's got, unless she's got capability to.
Okay, well, then, I don't know, but I'll email the board.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Bell?
Going back to when we interviewed some vendors, they talked about putting, they talked, we had some vendors like Dax or Ducker, whatever, with the dog tags and those stickers. They talked about putting a kiosk out there to sell stickers and stuff. Why can't we put a kiosk out there that just takes cash for water bills? And we don't take no cash at the window, which is, that way it's secure to think, breaks, comes in, dumps the truck once a week and you put it in the bank.
It sounds good, but that's a whole lot more.
Instead, instead, we can keep losing.
That's a whole lot more paperwork than you think. They just put a machine out there just for cash.
I know, we do. Better money missing, right?
That's not, you know, and now everyone knows that that's theirs, the cash is cash.
It's in the building, under, under, under security.
Oh, I'm sorry, that, no.
Well, we thought this was too, alright.
Trustee Burns?
So, there, I'm, I'm sure there is a way that we can make our municipal cash less where all we will begin to take our checks, credit cards and.
And we won't take cash at all?
We do not take cash. We can pay our bills with checks, credit cards, things of that nature. We don't need to take cash. We can make our, our, in that way, because if the checks, the credit cards and the transfers are always able to be reconciled, why won't we make it where our customers can come in and they don't have to pay cash? They go to the window, pay check, credit card, debit cards to pay their bills. That should, I'm sure that can be done. And because, because what I'm seeing, everything that is not reconcilable, everything that's been done is always being done with the cash coming up missing. So if it's always the cash that's coming up missing, let's find a way to have our, and he did say our tickets and our water bills and anything else here, our stickers, pay everything with credit card and checks and that nature. That's kind of where we're headed anyway. Most, a lot of places don't even deal with cash anymore.
Many more.
There's, I'm sorry.
They want?
Yeah?
For towels, they won't take cash anymore. Yeah, they won't take cash.
Okay, well.
And it's pretty sad when you got a drive-in, you don't even trust them with cash.
Okay.
So restaurants.
I didn't say you couldn't trust, don't say that. I said you couldn't trust employees with cash, I didn't say that, you all the same way.
Oh, I didn't mean to.
So please.
I didn't say anything about employees.
You said that you can't trust the employees with cash.
Oh, I didn't say that. I didn't say that, no. I just, I didn't say anything about employees, I'm saying that there are many, many companies that are cashless and restaurants. So I think that is something we should look into as a village of making our residents not have to come in with cash. And because we're confident that we can reconcile our state-ness and reconcile our accounts if it's paid through electronic means. And I think that's something we really need to look into because it's always the cash, it's always.
I never, that's pretty good, I mean, a lot of people may have to do, go to two or three different avenues to get the money to pay their bills and, you know, so I'm not looking, at least at this point in time, not taking cash. I mean, but that's something that you're talking about, something that may be discussed down the road, but right now, because now I'm turning away money, I'm trying to get it whenever I can. If people come up to them to pay their water bill, some of them have quarters. So everybody's not, may not have the cash, or not the cash, but the credit card or bank account or whatever. They're trying to pay their bills, so. Trustee Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is pertaining to the police investigation of the ten thousand dollars. Sir?
You, you're making a statement.
You said that there was a police investigation going on.
Yes, I've been saying that, it's not I said, I mean, I've been saying that, you all have been asking about this. I've been saying that investigation.
Okay, when did it start?
Pardon me?
When did it start? What, what month?
I can't tell you.
What year?
Last year.
Last year.
No, I'll take that back, no, I don't think, I think it was this year. I think it was.
But the money's been missing for how long?
Pardon me?
How long the money been missing since last year, right?
No, I didn't say the money.
Yeah, the money's been missing for how long? It's been over, what, six months? Six months into last year that the money was missing? So, well, the ten thousand dollars that's, you know, that was missing from the cash register, I think?
Now you're speculating, so you, you, you're making assumptions that, you're making liable. I'm just telling you what you're saying.
But you just said, okay, but you just said that the police, the ten thousand dollars was under the investigation by the police, correct?
I said the investigation, the investigation is being handled through the police department.
And when did it start, is my question?
I, I don't, I can't tell you right now because.
Okay, but I do know the ten thousand dollars has been missing since the middle of last year.
Okay, that's what you're saying.
You're telling me now that the investigation just started this year?
No, I didn't say that, no, I didn't say that.
Well, when did it start last year?
Right after we found out about it.
Okay, so it started last year?
If you said it started, if you said.
Okay, alright, so my question is, it's been under six months, would you say about six months to the investigation?
You keep asking me a question that I told you already, I don't know.
But you did say it's under investigation.
Yes, I did.
So I'm assuming you know when that investigation started?
And you're assuming, I don't.
Well, when did you ask for an investigation?
When after, when we, when we found out, sir.
And when was that?
And what's the point, sir?
My point, well, I'm asking you, when did it start?
I keep telling you, trustee, I don't know exactly when, I don't know.
You don't know when the investigation started?
No, I don't.
You don't know when the investigation started? When did you ask for the investigation?
For the third time.
When did you ask for the investigation?
When we found out about it.
When, and when was that?
Trustee, I like on people, I mean, I've already told you.
No, I'm asking you questions.
I don't know the date, sir, I don't know the date.
Okay, was it last year?
If I, if I don't know the date, now I'm gonna make up one.
Okay, well, this question is, I'm asking you, when did you ask the police for an investigation? That's the definite question altogether.
No, it's the same question you asked.
No, it's not, I'm asking you, when did you ask for the investigation? Do you know when? Do you remember when?
Mr. Mayor, can we get an update from the police department, maybe? Maybe we can get a copy of the report?
Okay.
Okay, I mean, if we get a copy of the report, that'll tell you the date, it'll give you more information because we haven't even seen that yet.
Okay.
So when can we expect a police report?
When?
Or when would you ask for a police, have, do you have, do you have any kind of reporting, any status of it?
Wednesday, I'll ask them tomorrow.
But do you have anything, any other status, report of it?
If I did, I would have given it to you.
Okay, so we have an investigation and you never asked for a report? Okay. I'm, I'm just trying to.
What?
We're trying to find out, when are you, when are you doing what you say you're doing?
Okay.
Okay, that's all. And I'm, I, I mean, we've been back and forth with this, so at some time, I'm expecting you to say, well, let me, let me get my records together because we know, I know they're gonna ask me again.
Really?
We're gonna keep asking, so why don't you just have the reports ready for us?
Oh, okay, well, at your next meeting, y'all should, 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 should.
Okay, so, okay, when will you have a report?
I just got to.
When will you have?
What part, sir, did I just say? I'm trying to, I'm, I'm holding, I just said that I would tell.
But you haven't answered the question. When will you have a report? When, when do you think you'll have a report?
I said I would talk to the chief tomorrow, didn't I say?
Tomorrow, okay.
Didn't I say that?
Alright, so next week, that's not next week, when we ask you the same question again, maybe you'll have an answer.
Now you're trying to be kind and sensitive. So I'm not answering nothing else you got to say, so now you're trying to be smart.
Oh, now you understand.
Yes, well, that's what it is.
We just want clear answers, we just want clear, we just want clear answers.
Okay, I'm giving you a clear answer. I don't know how much clearer I can give you. Keep asking me the same question over and over, you expect a different answer?
We've been asking these questions for quite some time now, sir. That's the point, we've been asking you these questions. We've asked you these questions so many times that you have yet to give us clear answers. That's the whole point of it, Mr. Mayor, no disrespect, we just deserve to know.
Okay.
We deserve to know, sir. We're responsible for legislation and finance, that's what this is about, finance, stolen finance, finance is missing.
You, 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 you.
You say, alright, this is our responsibility, correct?
What you're doing.
It's not our responsibility.
What you're doing is making, you're, you're, you're assuming and that, and that's not what you should do.
I'm asking.
No, you're assuming.
I am not assuming you, I'm asking. And I, and I'm not getting any answers.
Okay.
That's my problem, sir. I'm asking, I'm not assuming.
Yes, you are.
I'm asking you so I don't have to assume.
No, you are assuming.
And you don't have any answers, so I'm left to do nothing but to assume.
And that's what you do.
And that's not what I wanna do.
That's what you're doing, sir, I'm not going back and forth with you anymore, thank you. Okay, get a new mayor. You got two years to do that. Okay, last one, there's.
Mr. Mayor?
Are we going to?
No. Can we please have public comment moved up on the agenda before executive session?
Why?
Because we, we might be in there a while.
Okay, well, then, you all put this in the agenda, I didn't.
I'm just asking.
You should have asked, well, no, we're gonna go into, and I'm trying to ask, what's the?
It's, it's got a list of things in there, but can we move the public comment as courtesy?
We're going, courtesy for what?
To the residents that might.
They came out to, to, to listen, I mean, I'm sure you got a couple of.
It's just a simple request.
I didn't put the agenda together, okay. Well, you're right, he's not gonna do nothing.
Done it before, done it before.
Okay.
A move.
Okay, I make a motion that we move the public comment up on the agenda prior to motion to recess to executive session.
There was no motion called, there was not a motion called, I have to call the motion.
You don't respect our motions, Mr. Mayor, no. I just asked nicely.
But you respect everything I said.
I asked you very nicely, Mr. Mayor. I didn't demand it, I didn't.
You just got to say it.
Very nice. Anybody can, yeah, thank you, Mr. Attorney.
I said it.
Thank you. And trustee Coleman seconded it. I mean, all we're asking is to have a little bit of respect for your trustees.
Good, like we all do.
Mr. Mayor, I asked very nicely.
No, it don't.
Yes, it does.
This person told you.
Excuse me, resident, the mayor does not want to acknowledge our motion in second. Mr. Attorney? Mr. Attorney, your opinion, please.
Anyone, anyone in the board, anyone in the board who made a motion, as long as there's a motion and a second, go right to a roll call.
Roll call? Okay, we'll go right to a roll call. Shouldn't have to do this way, but okay. Trustee Bell? Trustee Burns? Trustee Grant? Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams? Yes, trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask. Public comment.
Okay, thank you, remember to state my name?
Yes, please.
Rosie Williams-Beg. I just have a couple of questions that you guys have talked about. The seventy-eight thousand dollars is under investigation. You talked about who's doing the investigation, the audit. The mayor said it was the auditors, trustee Williams said that the auditors are not investigating that. That's an issue because I don't see how you guys are gonna get your budget done if you don't know where that money is. You're going into another fiscal year in twenty-five days, number one. Number two, did you plan on expanding your audit budget for the next fiscal year? Because if you're trying to do three audits in one year and your audit budget cannot be the same as it was last year. Okay, number three, you say that there's money in the budget for the festivals? Awesome. Problem is, you're seventy-eight thousand dollars plus ten thousand dollars in the hole. A budget's a piece of paper, so before you really kind of sign anything, I would suggest that you get more clarification of where your money is because chances are, you don't have, you don't know what you have in your budget. You may have more than that, you may have less than that because right now, you guys are eighty-eight thousand dollars may or may not be in the hole. The people who are doing the current bank recs right now from the front office personnel, or any of those personnel here during the timeframe of twenty-twenty-one where the seventy-eight thousand went missing and the timeframe of who knows when when the ten thousand dollars went missing because that could be problematic, something you guys wanna look into. I think, oh, the police report, I was gonna mention a police report, you guys beat me to that. And then, even if you're gonna hire in-house, don't you still have to post a position? Because when I hire in-house at the library, every, every job I've ever done, I always post the position for a minimum of seven days to let everybody know that the position is available. And again, if you're already not getting bank recs done, you're not getting your budget done, you're not getting your audit done, might not wanna post in-house or hire someone from in-house, just a suggestion. And we, the mayor still has not answered who they were trained by. Trustee Williams mentioned that people who were doing training in the civic system before, they went to Wisconsin. He did say that they were trained, but multiple people had asked trained by whom and I think it's something that you guys need to figure out because again, if any of these person over here, when you're now down eighty-eight thousand dollars allegedly, they may not be the best people to do your bank recs now and you may wanna think about cleaning house per se and figuring out where you're gonna go from here because your budget, like I said, your budget ends in twenty-five days. And I know that if I was at eighty-eight thousand dollars in the hole, I'd have FOAs up you-know-what because I've been told I've stole lots of money and never have. So I'm just saying, something to look into and I expect a FOIA tomorrow. And I expect a FOIA tomorrow.
Good evening, Mayor, Board, Steve LaRocque. Um, you keep asking questions over and over. Where is the Director of Operations? I don't see Mr. Finch in this room at all. Your Director of Operations is supposed to know every single thing that's going on in this village. Your Director of Operations, uh, question two. Does the Director of Operations make roughly one hundred forty-two thousand dollars a year? Because from what I understand, Mr. Finch makes one hundred forty-two thousand dollars a year to know what's going on in this village, to know when there's an advertisement for a job position. He gets paid one hundred forty-two thousand dollars a year to make sure the right people are being trained correctly and being put in the right departments. Where is Mr. Finch? Where is your Director of Operations? That's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you. David Smith, actual South Village resident.
My question is, number one.
Name?
David Smith, again, for the second time. Actual South Village resident. Number one, I feel insulted, and I believe you owe trustee Coleman an apology. I've seen you sit up here and belittle certain trustees when they get out of pocket and disrespectful, when they curse at you, and I personally feel you deserve him an apology, because all he did was ask for questions. As an actual South Village resident, I feel you have a responsibility to know what's going on with these investigations. I feel the buck doesn't stop with the Director of Operations, the buck stops with the mayor. You should know, or you should at least want to know, they've been asking you for months, because I've been sitting in every meeting. In every meeting, you don't know anything. So when are you gonna take it upon yourself to go get some answers, because that's all he wanted? And he wasn't disrespectful about it. He called you sir, and you told him, I'm not answering any more questions from your ass. That's disrespectful. You owe that man an apology. You owe the village an apology. As religious as you are on your public picture page that you have on Facebook, you didn't exhibit that tonight. So I think you owe the man an apology, and I think you owe us some answers. See?
Larry Satt. We do deserve answers. You guys are asking the right questions, you're almost there, but you're stopping short. In January of twenty-twenty-two, I believe we hired someone as our senior accountant. That person, in their job description, is required to do bank reconciliations. We're paying that person seventy-five thousand dollars a year. Now, in January of twenty-twenty, of twenty-twenty-two, January twenty-third, from that point to this point, we need to know how many bank recs have been done. And if the, if the situation from that point to now shows that bank recs aren't being done because the money can't be accounted for, then that senior accountant should have known that. And why hasn't that been brought forward prior to that much money being taken? When a dollar was missing, if the bank recs couldn't account for it, it should have brought, it should have been brought to the attention of the mayor and the board by the person responsible for the money. Stop kicking the can down the road and hold the people accountable accountable. You're gonna put this on the day the operator, he does his job. Your job as mayor is to oversee even him. If he's not doing his job, that's your job, to make sure he does his job. Your job is to make sure everybody else over there do their job, man. The job should be posted. The the board decided that that person as director was not in 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 compliance with the way they wanted to go, and they let that person go. There's no reason, eight weeks later, that job is not posted. We're already behind in in audits, three years, and we can't do an audit. You telling him that there's an investigation going on by an auditor, that's not even possible, because bank recs aren't done. How can an auditor come in if we don't have the proper things in the portal? We need to get this thing right. Oh, what, tango, where we we, when we practice to deceive.
You ready? Diane Satt. Mr. Mayor, my question is very basic. Has anyone ever been reprimanded for the loss? These things occurred in twenty-one, so, as far as I know. Twenty-one, so somebody had to be reprimanded at some point. Was there a reprimand for anyone? Nobody received anything for the lost funds? Somebody was responsible. What happened to that individual? That's my question.
There is? Um, first of all, I will, because I am a bigger man than that, I will apologize to you, trustee Coleman, for losing my, um, cool. Um, I try not to let that happen, but sometimes it does, so in that case, I do apologize for lashing out and saying the words that I did say. I have a plan for it. Um. The other ones were comments, um, yes, you're absolutely right, I am the one that everyone's gonna ask questions. That's why I'm trying to get everything, um, trying to get as many answers as I possibly can with who I have. Um. The investigation, I don't speak when investigations are ongoing, because it may lead to legal. And if you say the wrong thing, or you mention the wrong thing, we be held accountable for that, and it could be a lawsuit. So when things are in investigation, it's best, and that's why they do, it's best not to say anything until they come out with something that's official. Because I don't know what the outcome is gonna be. You're, people are assuming that it was stolen. We don't, I don't know exactly. I wasn't standing there when it happened. I was told. So what I can do is put the investigation in charge. How long it's taking them? Only thing I can do is keep asking, um, are they done yet? Are are we done? Can we go forth? I was told by the the, um, auditors that they wanted to, um, look into what this was and and how it, as far as the seventy-eight thousand, if it was seventy-eight thousand. We're making these statements, we're saying all these things, we're just going, only thing is, we had a closed session. It was discussed, and it came out to an open session, it was discussed, and it's still out there. What's happening right now, it is an ongoing. I don't know. I'm not gonna sit here and say, well, yeah, I know who did it, or I know why, or whatever, because I don't. So. In regards to, um, the posting of the job, as I stated earlier today, I will let the board know what, um, what direction I want to go in, um, at that time. At least, I've always done, when I had an interim finance director, when I had interim, uh, people doing, um, things, um, at at in the village, I didn't let the board know. I didn't just do it and and there's nothing said. So I I I know this job is tough, I have no problem with it. What I don't like is the arguing back and forth, the disrespect going back and forth, the name-calling, the under, under, undertow current, and that's not happening in the, in the, uh, audit. It's happening here on the board. And you were elected, we all were elected. Not to sit up here and put on a show every, every, every two, that we were elected to find it and to move the village forward. That's all I'm gonna try to do. That being said, I still need to find out what is it that we're going into executive session for.
I can refresh and tell you.
I I will not, trust, I mean, um. Okay. And if you're not, then you already know that we don't go back and forth like that. You already know, we don't go back and forth. If I.
I have a comment, I have to ask a question. I just wanted to get you kind of asking a question.
The other thing that I was talking about, I did answer as far as on the expanding the budget, the audit budget. Yes, it has to be expanded. If we have the money in there, it it may happen, because if we can get two audits done in a year, then yes, that'll have to be done. That has to be done after the new budget. Um.
Train Michael, and if the people in the front office were there.
Uh, Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams. Please, see, if you do that, Williams Bay, if you do that, you expect everybody to do that. We lead by example, we don't go back and forth. I know it's it's it's, it's, you probably think it's protocol, but if you do it now, then people say they figure they can do it too. You've said what you had to say, I listened to it, and I tried to answer those questions. But as far as who am I gonna get to to do or whatever, right now, I have to find out, I have to have to get that done first. That's why I didn't answer, that's why I called that a comment. Because if I know who's gonna do what, I would have already put that person in in the position to do that.
No, sir, I I asked who the front office people were trained by, because you said they were trained. And trustee Williams asked the same question. So I was asking you to clarify, by whom? And then, you answered the audit question, thank you. You asked about posting the position, thank you. But you didn't answer if they, who they were trained by, and were the people in the front office who were currently doing the bank recs? Were they here when the money was missing? So I just, because you've mentioned, you started speaking second, there were comments in it. I just wanted to remind you that there were in fact four questions from me to answer to. Just want to go over and answer that too.
Again, Ms. Williams Bay. We already know, we don't, that's called debate, we don't debate. I know I didn't read it on here, and I should have read it, but it is, we don't debate, I mean, you you got, you didn't get to answer whatever that you wanted, and you're gonna go back and forth. For this one time, I'll do it, I'll 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 actually answer that question for you, but I'm just letting you know that that's not proper. I've never done it, I didn't make any adjustments for no other person. This is the first time. Now, as far as who, um, is is, um, trained to do it, you have a person already up there, which is our senior accountant. They have trained the people that's that's doing the, uh, bank recs. So, and that person, uh, already knew when they got here how to do bank recs, the senior accountant. Okay, um, I'm asking the board, what is the reason for executive session? Trustee, trustee, no, no.
I just asked you a question, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, go ahead, general comments, starting with you.
I just asked.
Starting with you.
I asked to have motion to recess to go at the end, which means we still have general comments.
General comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's all, a little bit of respect goes a long way.
No, it does.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Okay. All we really want is, like I said, it can be as long as it needs to be. It's just about respect, and about the fact that we are not getting answers after several, several months of asking the same question, and when we ask them, we're still not getting answers. And as far as the comment from the gentleman in the audience about our Director of Finance, we were told to go to him to ask these questions, and he doesn't get the answers either. So if he doesn't get the answers, how are we supposed to get it? Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you're aware of this, but there's a lot of trouble back there. Okay, there's a lot of, um, uh, hostility, disconnect amongst the, um, the staff. And not just one position, not just one person, there's a lot of not people working together, and that is not how we're gonna make this better. Until we bring everybody together and realize what everybody's job is, and everybody does the job that they were hired to do, and not get extra duties that they weren't trained properly. Again, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, maybe they were trained properly, but I know we sent people to Wisconsin to get trained. So I don't know who here is qualified to train the people that are handling our front desk operations. But, Mr. Mayor, please, just work with us. Don't work against us. Answer our questions. I send emails all the time that do not get responded to. That's why we are so upset. We are responsible for the money, you know it. We are asking questions, we don't get them. And you can't blame any staff member back there for not doing their job, regardless to how much they get paid, because they can only ask the same questions we do and not get responded to any better than we do. Please respect us, Mr. Mayor, we want to work with you, not against you, but you are making it very difficult.
Trustee Jazinski?
I really have no comment at this time.
Trustee?
No, thank you.
Trustee Coleman?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, um, let me start off by saying apology, apology except. I, and I take it even a step further, I forgive you for everything. I mean, you know, even, you know, the, sometimes belittlement and all that, I forgive you for it. And, um, as far as, you know, the questions, you know, we're gonna continue to ask questions, because we need to know, I mean, that's our job. So, you know, just, you know, it would help if we just, you know, have some of these answers ready. That's, that's all I got to say.
Trustee Byrne?
Um, the person who is training the front staff to do bank recs is the same person that was supposed to be doing bank recs for the audits? Because if that person is training the front staff to be, to do bank recs, why didn't they do the bank recs that they were supposed to do, so that we can make sure this audit is done? So I'm not understanding why someone is training other people to be, to be, to do bank recs when they were hired to do bank recs. That's my comment, because I didn't know that the person is training other people to do bank recs when they themselves was hired to do the bank recs. I am confused about that part.
Trustee Bell?
Thank you, ma'am. If I'm not mistaken, wasn't, isn't Mr. Finch's job to run the Navy operations at the village? And but somewhere along the way, I seem to remember someone saying, everything but finance. I seem to remember hearing this somewhere. Not sure how close that was. I know he does his treasury stuff, but I thought he was told, I thought we were told that senior accountant's in charge of finance department, period. And and you 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 sat out here in open board, she she answers to Finch. Correct?
Are you making a comment, or you asking a question?
Um, now I'm gonna ask you a question.
I don't have an answer for that. I don't have an answer for that.
I didn't expect you.
You're supposed to be comments, there's supposed to be comments, I didn't, you'd already asked me questions. This is your comment. Yes, ma'am, that you're absolutely right, trustee Williams. Please, you're absolutely right. See, that's what I'm talking about. That's what I'm talking about. No, blurting out.
Yeah, why not, why don't we all just start blurting and shut out?
Go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead. We, uh, trustee, are you all gonna, are we gonna do this again, or what? Okay, go ahead, trustee Grant.
Thank you, Mayor. No comment.
Okay, um. The part that I'm, that I'm looking at, and and I'm just gonna say this, and it's just a comment, you're talking, you're talking about, and I, and I hear more and more from, from trustees saying that the front office, or the employees at the front office here in the village are very hostile. We've been here for two hours and fifteen minutes, and we've been going back and forth with hostility. So. Only thing I can say, and only thing I will say, instead of keep pointing fingers at people, think about what it is that you're doing. instead of keep pointing fingers at people, think about what it is that you're doing. And I hope that at one time or sooner or later, we can get it, that we're here for a purpose and not for here to be on television, or just, let's make a movie, let's see who we can make mad, let's see who we can talk about. Answers, you don't want to hear that, so therefore, you ask the same question again in a different way, and then you want a different answer. We, you know, if, if we're gonna go, keep on going back and forth and not getting anything done, exactly what you're gonna have. I'm hoping that we'll be have, and we, they start the new administration office, that we can all be held accountable for, not just, um, do what someone says or whatever, but do what's right. That is my comment, to do what's right. Because arguing back and forth is not gonna solve nothing. Going back and forth and accusing people is not gonna solve anything, all it does is makes, makes it worse. So, we have to decide on what it is we want to do, do we want to move it forward, do we want to keep it the same way it is and argue back and forth? Because you were elected for the people to run the village and to try to make a difference. Not try to point fingers, not try to accuse someone of this, not try to be, not just, not disrespectful, just downright, just, just want to do what I want to do, and that's it. And then also, and I'm gonna make this comment, and I'm gonna ask for recess, you do know that when you meet more than two, that's open meetings act violation. I'll ask for a, um, I guess it's closed session for personnel, and what else? Pending litigation, I don't know who's gonna give that. Collective bargaining, review executive session minutes, you have those?
No, sir, just, it's the same script that...
Real estate or employment compensation, that's needed, uh, that's our motion. Moved by Trustee Coleman, seconded by Trustee Jazinski. He raised his hand. He, he raised his hand, he said it was him. Madam, what, please, I'm sorry, Madam, um, Trustee, please call the roll.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee, uh, Charles? You have Trustee Jazinski?
Yes.
And I, Trustee Williams.